Got it. Okay. Welcome to the school board meeting of January the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty four. We're meeting in the superintendent's office tonight. Do we have any changes, additions, or approval and approval of the agenda?
Can we add a very, very short executive session, a follow-up on a matter, personnel matter?
Of course. Any others?
With that change, I believe we adopt the agenda as amended.
Just second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hi, Sarah. Okay. We're going to go right into government's policy, section four, policy GP two.
If you don't mind.
I don't mind at all.
So as the one member of the finance committee who is here at the moment, I have a few thoughts on it. Since I only recently joined the finance committee, I'm not sure how good the thoughts are, but the thoughts that I have are as follows. Jacob has been looking at the state rules about the cap on tax increases. Because of the way those rules appear to work, it looks like we have a goal that we should be trying to get to. In terms if we can get under a ten percent increase for the long-term weighted average student number. So the cost per student basically is under a ten percent increase. Then the tax increase will be limited to five percent, multiplied by the adjustment that they use anyway. It does totally solve the problem of the extraordinarily large number we're working at, but it certainly does as much as it's possible to do within the rules to get below or as low as we can. And in doing this, we should try to avoid, put off, delay, put it into other means of expenses that don't go through this process so we can get to the number. And in light of that and the conversation I had with Tom earlier, this is not something I want to do, but it is one way to get at at least some of the increases. I would suggest that we, as our first cut, basically do not continue with the superintendent search at this time and wait until next year. We have an entire number year left on Tom's contract. He had intended to have Tom here while the new superintendent arrived to make sure that the new superintendent was, had a mentor, could be helped get up on his feet so Tom could do work to assist and make that happen. But if we're trying to avoid costs, effectively having two superintendents is something that we can avoid. This is going to have to have us reach out and talk to the search firm. I'm hoping that if we explain that we probably intend to have them come back next year, that they would be allowing us to apply the last majority or maybe even all of the money that we had agreed to pay them for the search to the search at a later date. But if we don't have two people that we have to pay for superintendent's position, that allows us to reduce that amount out of next year's budget.
And this is the budget that we talked about earlier. Basically, it's two years, right?
Are you talking about the five percent?
The five percent would be in effect for next year.
Right.
Yeah, do you want to explain?
Yeah, so why don't we have the explanation of how that works? And then we can talk about how we try to get under the target.
So basically with the new funding model for the state, it's kind of like four quadrants where is your per pupil spending increase less than ten percent of your equivalent FY twenty four per pupil spending? Or is it greater than ten percent? If your spending is less than the ten percent, basically, and your district tax rate is less than five percent, your district tax rate is calculated and there's no tax rate review. Whereas if you're below the ten percent per pupil, but you're greater than five percent on your tax increase, you would be capped at five percent. So let's say, you know, the rate increase was nine percent. You would be capped at five percent. And basically, the state would backfill the remaining four percent and, you know, adjust the yields either one, two, or all three of those yield numbers to basically make up for that.
And as I understand it, it's your tax rate gets capped at five percent. Then they apply the common level appraisal. And then that becomes what the tax rate is.
Got it, okay. Welcome to the school board meeting of January the sixteenth, two thousand twenty four. Um, we're in the superintendent's office tonight. Um, do we have any changes, additions, or approval and approval of the agenda?
Can we add a, um, a very, very short executive session, a follow up on a matter, personnel matter?
Of course. Any others?
With that change, I believe we adopt the agenda as amended.
A second one?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi Sarah. Okay, we're gonna go right into uh governance policy, section four, policy GP two.
If you don't mind.
I don't mind at all.
Um, so as the one member of the finance committee who is here at the moment, I have a few thoughts on it. Uh, since I only recently joined the finance committee, I'm not sure how um good the thoughts are, but the thoughts that I have are as follows. Jacob has been looking at uh the state rules about the cap on tax increases. Uh, because of the way those rules appear to work, it looks like we have a goal that we should be trying to get to. In terms of if we can get under a ten percent increase for the long term weighted average student number. So the cost per student basically is under a ten percent increase. Then the tax increase will be limited to five percent multiplied by the adjustment that they use anyway. It does totally solve the problem of the extraordinarily large number we're working at, but it certainly does as much as it's possible to do within the rules to get below or as low as we can. Um, and in doing this, we um should try to avoid, put off, delay, put it into uh other means of expenses that don't go through this process so we can get to the number. Um, and in light of that and the conversation I had with Tom earlier, um, this is not something I want to do, but it is one way to get at at least some of the increases. Um, I would suggest that we, as our first cut, um, basically do not continue with the superintendent search at this time and wait until next year. We have entire number, uh, year left on Tom's uh contract. And we had intended to have Tom here while the new superintendent arrived to make sure that the new superintendent was, had a mentor, could be helped get up on his feet. So Tom could do work to assist and make that happen. But if we're trying to avoid costs, effectively having two superintendents is something that we can avoid. Uh, this is going to have to have us reach out and talk to the search firm. I'm hoping that if we explain that we probably intend to have them come back next year, uh, that they would be allowing us to uh apply the last majority or maybe even all of the money that we had agreed to pay them for the search, uh, to the search at a later date. Uh, uh, but if we don't have two people that we have to pay for superintendent's position, that allows us to reduce that amount out of next year's budget.
And this is the budget that we talked about earlier, that basically it's two years, right?
Are you talking about the five percent?
The five percent would be in effect for next year.
Right.
Yeah, do you wanna explain?
Yeah, so why don't we have the explanation of how that works? And then we can talk about how we try to get under the target.
So basically with the new funding model for the state, um, it's kinda like four quadrants where, um, is your per pupil spending increase uh less than ten percent of your equivalent FY twenty four per pupil spending? Or is it greater than ten percent? Um, if your spending is less than the ten percent, um, basically, uh, and your district tax rate is less than five percent, um, your district tax rate is calculated and there's no um tax rate review. Whereas if you're below the ten percent per pupil, but you're greater than five percent on your tax increase, um, you would be capped at five percent. So let's say, you know, the rate increase was nine percent, you would be capped at five percent. And basically the state would backfill the remaining four percent and, you know, adjust the yields, either one, two, or all three of those yield numbers to basically make up for that.
And as I understand it, it's your tax rate gets capped at five percent, then they apply the common level appraisal. And then that becomes what the tax rate is. But the common level of appraisal is going to increase it so much. So if we can get it capped at five percent, so if we come in at nine point eight percent increase per, or actually, they're, they're not directly connected. It's because of the odd ways things work, we, if we can keep the total spending per student increase under ten percent, then we can keep the total tax increase to five percent, no matter what it would have been otherwise.
Right.
So that allows us a bit of an escape valve uh to blow off some of the steam that is accumulated because of the inflation on economy.
For a year.
For a year.
Going down that road, next year you would be capped at five percent. So no matter what your budget is, like, that's where you have to land.
Yeah.
Yeah. You have no choice.
So that's something that, in my opinion, we need to weigh in. This is what Doug's comment for reference, two years. We need to consider that because next year you don't wanna get hit with this whopping reduction because it's a five percent cap. You're still gonna have teachers' salary increases, insurance increases, and other costs that we really can't control. So you, you just wanna be aware of that this year.
And, and that's.
It's the only time like we don't usually have to consider that, but this year since we know there will be a five percent cap, we better consider what that might play out like next year, if that makes any sense.
So there's long term consequences.
Oops, there's Kevin Christie, he can be upgraded.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
So my question is, if we back off right now, like your, as your suggestion is, is that gonna make that much difference?
Oh, well, we could run the, the numbers and tell you.
Because all we're looking at is, is Tom's salary, right?
No, no, that's not the only cut we're gonna have.
Yeah, we need to do.
Oh, no, no, I meant, oh, yeah, okay, let me rephrase that, let me rephrase that. What you were talking about.
Mm-hmm.
So if we back off, we still have Tom's salary for this year and next, or for, yeah.
But we would not have a, we would not have the salary for.
Have the other salary.
The salary and benefits that we budgeted for the new superintendent.
Yes.
Right. Eliminating.
Right.
So my question is, how much difference does that make for that additional salary and benefits that we have figured in?
That's just, I, my assumption is it's just a start, but.
Yeah, that's just a start.
But it's a.
Cause I think Jake, do you know the number to get from where we are to under ten? Is that one?
It's about a million.
So that's.
With the bond, let me, let me rephrase here, cause there's a couple of different things going on. As it is now, I've included some bond interest, assuming that we're gonna go ahead with the bond. So that impacts that, so with the bond, it's about a million.
Right.
And without the bond?
It's much higher because the bond is actually allowing us to spread the cost of.
Right, that, over.
Yes.
I'm just thinking, if the people don't.
Yes.
Without the bond, you're probably.
If the, if the people don't vote for the bond, if they say no, so where is that gonna put us then?
It'd be about four hundred thousand dollar cut to get us below that ten percent. Okay. In addition, on top of the million. Well, the, the, the million is with the bond.
Yes.
Four hundred thousand without the bond.
Without the bond.
But that's not, seeing one of the things you're, you're, I don't think you're counting in there is.
We still have to do the work.
We have to add some to facilities if we're not gonna do the bond.
Yes.
So that would increase.
Well, I'm not saying not present the bond, I'm saying present the bond, but if the people say no, then, then where does that put us? If the people say yes, that's a whole different ballgame. But if the people say no, we don't want this bond, we're not gonna vote for it.
It's gonna become very painful.
Yes.
Oh, I know, but how.
So we need to do a very good job of explaining that the bond is one of the ways we used to control our cash flows and expenditures for next year, so we could get below the ten percent. And if the bond is not passed, yes, we don't have to pay the interest on the bond, but then we still have to pay for all the structure, all the work and other kinds of work that we were going to have to do anyway, cause we don't have a choice on those.
Right.
This is not a.
That the number if they, if they were to turn the bond.
Yeah, if, yeah, that's, that's what Jonathan has delineated.
If they turn the bond down.
Mm-hmm.
We will have to come up with four point two million dollars.
To do the.
To do the things.
All the work that has to be done.
That'll close the doors.
Right.
Take your choice.
Right, okay.
Those are the things isolated out of the bond that have to be done.
Right.
Yeah.
Do we all have that?
So when you look at this, it, it just doesn't.
Yeah, so we're looking for a series of ways to either spend less or make sure the cost of whatever we're doing doesn't hit next year.
Whoops.
And one of the ways to spend less is not to hire a superintendent right away, wait on that. Another way is to take advantage of all the work you've already done in terms of the bond proposal, which avoids four million dollars of payouts for work we're going to have, or four and a half million dollars. Uh, it allows us to expense that over two decades, so maybe we go for twenty a bond.
Yeah.
Uh, so there are, now there's a cost to pay, of course, because there's interest associated with the bond, but it allows us to avoid having to pay all that money, find it under the couch cushions immediately. So that's another thing that we can do to try to cut, to get under that ten percent, if that is the goal we're trying to reach. Otherwise, the goal we're trying to reach is we keep on cutting until we look at the overall tax increase and say we think that we might be able to get that past the public.
Yeah, and I mean, to get from where we were at Wednesday's meeting to where I think would be at all, you know, acceptable to the board, so I think it was what, thirty six or seven percent last Wednesday?
Yeah.
It's getting worse now because, um, when I went to VASBA, which for those listening is the Vermont Association of School Business Officials, um, they had said that we should use a lower homestead yield than what was on the December letter from the tax commissioner's office.
Can you upgrade Kevin?
Which obviously makes our situation worse.
I don't know how many, he's still a participant, I mean attendee.
And did I not just correct me, did I not, seems like at the very end of last week that, that something came out and said that they were gonna change the yield again?
Yeah.
Definitely?
I mean, the yield is a moving target and it's, it's not final until it's final in June.
I don't know what's happening.
Right.
Um, but the feedback from the field was, hey, you should probably use this when you're, you know, using this for a budget number.
Right.
But the yield is, the yields will change because, you know, based on this whole cap situation, like the legislature and the state's gonna have to adjust those to be able to fund it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we're not really quite sure where the yields are gonna end up.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know.
There are additional, I mean, there are several cuts that, you know, other cuts. Cause I thought we could also reduce the amount that you were going to increase the facilities line.
Right, so we, another thing that we should probably look at is we should tap into the capital reserve ones, which there's about four hundred and twenty four thousand in there, so, um, that's money we should tap from the reserve when we can decrease, um, the facilities budget by that much.
So this is a, this is an exercise in kicking the can down the road, to be totally honest about it. We are trying to make sure that the impact doesn't hit now when the common level of appraisal is particularly bad, which multiplies everything we're gonna go to the taxpayers that much more.
Which, I mean, obviously, you know, if the CLA goes up next year, it greatly improves our situation, but I mean, if it goes down, it makes things.
It wors, but we're also looking at what are the impacts of inflation?
Right.
Uh, what happens to the housing market? We're talking about, uh, having a significant number of new housing units on the market. That should increase the CLA, of course, if it's not captured, that means the, I mean, it should, should increase the grand list. But if it is not captured on the CLA, that hurts us. But if it takes off enough people out of the market, the demand falls with prices fall, that helps us. Uh, it's complicated enough that you can't work out how it's going to play. Uh, but for those of you who follow what's reported about the financial state of the United States, while we are currently individually feeling very bad about inflation, Lord knows every time I go to the, the food store, it is a painful experience.
I guess.
But other elements of inflationary impact on the market, at least on the economy at least the moment, are heading downwards, which means that we might have less inflation next year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, despite everything, oil costs, fuel costs are one of our major costs, they're going down. So there is a chance, this, there's no guarantees on any of this. We're sort of, we're gambling a little bit, as if they're out of the, for the blacks.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but if we can get below the ten percent, cap our taxes for this year, we've got a year to hope that inflation goes down, that we, as a town, do something to deal with the grand list issue, that we have slightly less demand for housing, which means that the increase in housing prices, which is part of the problem for all of this, gets reflected. Uh, maybe the state legislature actually does something to look at it, to see how to deal with this issue. Cause we're not the only town in the entire state that is dealing with this problem at the moment.
It's Kevin.
Ah, Kevin, I'm glad he is joining us. So the point is.
Sorry about that, Kevin.
We're, we're not getting rid of the problem, it still will be a problem. We're giving ourselves time to try to come up with some other factors that will allow the impact to be less disastrous than a thirty six point whatever percent tax increase that we were looking at.
I mean, the original, the original cuts that I, I thought I had to make before I understood the five percent cap.
Yeah.
For next year was, was, uh, in the range of five point three million dollars. So that would be everything that we added for this year for four million dollars, plus an additional million three, which would have been, excuse the expression, but draconian cut. So luckily there's this, you know, five percent cap rule. But again, I mean, I think it's gonna help for next year, but we just wanna be cautious that we're not kicking, you know, a large can down the road.
Yeah, and then.
So we need to, I think we need to reduce the budget as much as we can comfortably or even a little bit uncomfortably, but not five point three million.
So what else are we looking at?
So that is something I think we need to get to in a moment, but I just wanna talk about how we're thinking about this. So my proposal is that we attempt to get under the ten percent increase per student, which will allow the tax increases to get capped at five percent, which means that the actual tax increase will come in somewhere around nine or ten or something like that, I would assume, given the CLA's a multiplying effect. Uh, I haven't, we haven't run the numbers through to see how it's gonna, we're gonna have to do that. But the point is, it will come back with some number which hopefully is significantly lower than thirty seven, a thirty six percent increase of the tax rate. But we need to understand that we're basically doing the equivalent of jumping out of the plane and pulling the parachute. We only got one. If the parachute doesn't work and we don't land someplace safely, we're still in freefall and we still need to deal with the issues. This may get us to the ground safely, it might not, but it's our one attempt to either, to, to deal with it in a, in a safe quote unquote or safer way.
And again, in my mind, it makes me wanna consider additional cuts for next year so that the following year isn't quite so painful.
Right, and for that.
Even though this is gonna be painful, if we don't take a bigger, bigger hit cut at it, next year's gonna be.
Really bad too. And the point that we need you to do is explain exactly how the cap system works so that we all know the rule and what the consequences of choosing to pull the parachute are. So if you can go through that now, just to explain it, and if you have something to share with people, um, you can hand it out.
You want me to print that tax sheet or?
Uh, I was just looking at the sheet, um, Brad James from the AOE, um, he's kinda transitioning now into Cooley's, taking over for him. But he sent out, um, which was in all those read here, cause it was asked. Questions been asked, if the rate increase is actually nine percent, but the five percent cap is in place, does the district need to adjust its spending so the rate calculates to a five percent increase? No, spending for the district remains same, rates capped at five percent. Lost homestead tax revenue was just that, lost revenue to the ed fund, uh, but the same demand on the ed fund remains, so that lost revenue will be made up by adjusting the property yield, income yield, or the non-homestead tax rate to bring the right amount of education property tax revenue to the ed fund.
Now, that addresses the property tax. Doesn't have any cut at all on the people who are paying based on income. Cause we could end up in the weird situation that they actually pay more if it's only cutting the property tax.
Good point.
I'm not entirely sure.
Okay, so there's a.
Question there.
There's a question there. And you talked about the fact that there is, if we take this, there's a lock on the second year, which is not achieved by them coming in and doing fairy dust magic on the numbers. We actually have a cap on how much we can spend.
Right, your FY twenty six budget increase would be capped at five percent.
Five percent, no matter what.
Yeah.
That could be a very difficult number. This system which we live under and which we've gotten used to has been in part successful because we have been in a historically long period of time with very low inflation. So we didn't have to deal with the effects of inflation on the spending the same ways we're all being forced to now. And there is going to be a reckoning, because inflation has now hit, we've seen the results. We're paying the prices in the school district in terms of labor, health insurance, supplies, fuel, everything else.
I believe we could do, we could do some calculation, it would be rough, but we could try to figure out what the five percent cap would be next year.
So, so, so here, here, does, um, do we have the calculator on your computer so that, uh, it can be, uh, viewed by the rest of the board with that example of FY twenty four and FY twenty five, you know, based on the cap?
I think we could do that, right, because of the yields and because of all the other variables?
Yeah, that's the problem is, we can make assumptions about the student body staying more or less stable or expanding.
Very slightly.
But that's, that's, that's what everybody else is doing. That, that's what everybody else is doing because we have to get the budgets locked in, you know, for town meeting. And what's starting, while not starting, what's occurring, you know, is every single board in the state is going through the exact same thing and trying to make the same decision we're trying to make, you know, based on their given situation. My, my suggestion is if we can post the calculator, at least so that we can get a, a visual of what we're talking about, so that we're not just dealing with, you know, the, the technical assumptions, that might be helpful for us to make our decisions.
So I, yeah, I think if we can get the calculator shared, so we all see us.
Do you wanna do that or me?
I'll do it.
Yeah. Yeah, we, Jake and I both have the calculator and we worked on it all weekend.
Right, so we can go through.
Five percent, no matter what, and that could be a very difficult number. This system which we live under and which we've gotten used to has been in part successful because we have been in a historically long period of time with very low inflation. So we didn't have to deal with the effects of inflation on the spending the same ways we're all being forced to now. And there is going to be a reckoning, because inflation has now hit. We've seen the results, we're paying the prices in the school district in terms of labor, health insurance, supplies, fuel, everything else.
I believe we could do, we could do some calculation, it would be rough, but we could try to figure out what the five percent cap would be next year.
So, so, so here, here, does, uh, do we have the calculator, uh, on your computer so that, uh, it can be, uh, viewed by the rest of the board with that example of FY24 and FY25, you know, based on the cap?
I think we could do that, right, because of the yields and because of all the other variables?
Yeah, that's the problem is, we can make assumptions about-
Right.
The student body staying's more or less stable or expanding.
Very slightly. But that's, that's, that's what everybody else is doing. That, that's what everybody else is doing, because we have to get the budgets locked in, you know, for town meeting. And what's starting, well, not starting, what's occurring, you know, is every single board in the state is going through the exact same thing and trying to make the same decision we're trying to make, you know, based on their given situation. My, my suggestion is if we can post the calculator, at least so that we can get a, a visual of what we're talking about, so that we're not just dealing with, you know, the, the technical assumptions. That might be helpful for us to make our decisions.
So, I, yeah, I think if we can get the calculator shared, so we all see each other. Um-
Do you wanna do that, or me?
I'll do it.
Yeah. Uh- Yeah, we, Jake and I both have the calculator and we worked on it all weekend.
Right, so we can go through-
That's what I use to come up with my numbers, so I'm pretty sure.
Take into, so assuming that we do decide to stop the superintendent search now, so that, that will be the following year. That means that that following year expenditure for the superintendent will only be one superintendent, but it still will go towards whatever increase there is.
Um, yeah, utilizing the calculator can-
Assuming for the purposes of this exercise, that we are going to, when we get to it, approve the bond so we can spend, spread that four point five billion dollars and other needed stuff over twenty years, then how much money do we still need to cut to get below 10%? We can model how much those cuts affect the overall-
So, I'll just show you right now, um, these are your present all bondage, uh, all fund expenditures. Uh, and as it is right now with all the numbers and the lower, um, homestead, we're at thirteen point fourteen percent on the cost per pupil increase. So if we cut, let's say, a little in, that gets us down to nine point eight.
Mm-hmm. So that million, uh, so if we take the superintendent out of it, it's slightly over two hundred thousand?
Yeah.
So that gets it down to seven hundred and, what, eighty thousand or something?
Which, um, if we do, you know, um, that number plus taking, you know, about four hundred and twenty-four thousand out of facilities and tapping, uh, Capital Reserve One, um, that gets us to six thirty-seven oh fifty-eight, so you'd be working at another three sixty-two, nine forty-two to cut from the budget to get you to that million.
And, and I, I think I can-
You've come up with some just, suggestions of what we would cut to get there?
Yeah, and if you just give me the number you wanna land at, like past years, I'll make the reductions to get to it.
So I would like to-
I don't wanna name that now, because that causes-
Right, so-
Pain in the community.
So I would, I would like the number to be the number that gets us to nine point eight or nine point nine percent increase on a weighted student, per pupil number. So we have just a little bit of squish room in case somebody comes back and looks at our numbers and said, "You underestimated," and then we're okay.
And just keep in mind that-
Cause I don't want the, the state to come back and said, "You did the calculation wrong, you're, you know, thirteen thousand dollars over, congratulations, you don't get the cap, and we don't have to find the money to fund it now."
Right.
Yeah.
So have, has somebody looked at the contract with our, with our search?
We're gonna have to talk to them anyway, so the amount we paid for the search is a relatively small amount.
Yeah, but you just didn't know what the contract said.
It doesn't have anything in there.
I can't remember, I didn't have, I had to-
Uh, yeah, so my hope is, they'll say, "We understand, we'll let you continue this next year." They may have some slight penalty because of the delay or something, but they haven't gone terribly far down the road, we're gonna pay their expenses for travel anyway and so forth. Uh, and they do know that they got a guaranteed drop next year, which has gotta be worth something.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but that allows us to avoid the, the two hundred plus thousand dollar, uh, salary plus benefits, total package cost being duplicated.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, I just-
Yeah, I just wanted to, yeah.
Some of the questions that are popping in my head, or have we looked at the contract, do we know what that's?
And, and the answer is no, we haven't yet done that, this is something we came up with today to think about when Tom and I were talking, kind of, you know, where do we?
Right.
And, um-
Just an idea there.
Yeah, and it was an idea, and I thought it's a, it's a good one to show that, you know, we really are trying to find ways to cut with the least impact on students, yes.
One of the things, you know, we've already done is absorbed all the, uh, the escher, the COVID relief positions into the budget, so we've done some nice things already and then, you know, there are four million dollars worth of additions, changes over this year's budget for next year, so about a million of them we have no control over.
Right.
Unfortunately, plus the health insurance premiums and the salary contract changes. Um, there are probably a few that, you know, we could, we could, um, eliminate.
Okay.
That one just kinda rose to the top.
So, and part of the question I have is, do we want to go deeper than the nine point eight or nine point nine? Because-
Of the second year.
The second year, um, though quite frankly, if this year becomes the basis for next year, we want this year to be as large as possible, so that whatever we do have to fit, we'll have that much more headroom.
Could you bring it down to nine?
We can play any game we want, yeah.
Uh, two, two.
I mean, you still have to, oh, I guess not.
One point two, take it down to nine fourteen.
So the question is, where do you want that number to come in? Um, being from a standpoint of doing as well as we can for ourselves, the closer we are to ten, the better we are, because it's effectively free money from the state that's paying the difference. Um, at least for the landlord and taxpayers who are not paying based on their income.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're gonna have to explain that very well.
Yeah, cause I don't know-
The tax sheet is still gonna look very hard.
Obstated, yeah. Um, um, and unfortunately, you have to accept the fact that by definition, those who are paying based on income are the ones who have the least ability to absorb it.
Mm-hmm.
So with that reduction, Jake, did you already push enter? So nine point one four, what does that bring us to on property tax and income?
Uh, you'd be looking at forty-two point four on the property and twenty-four point five on the income base.
Property tax, it's, oh, because the yields were, so we're, we're cutting, but it's still going up because of the yields, uh, and the, sorry, the, so twenty-four?
Twenty-four and a half.
Yeah. And-
So when you look at, when, Peter, when you look at the calculator, um, because we can't see the whole thing, um, what is the dollar amount difference in a, let's say, a hundred thousand, no, uh, two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home? Cause I think we had that in the calculator before, so that we could look at what a resident-
Yeah.
Right.
So, uh, I can't read it, but from here.
On a hundred thousand dollar home, um, for, uh, you'd be looking at seven fifty-five sixty, which is not taking into account the cap.
And the, the, uh, yeah, so we haven't played the cap game yet, but for the people paying on, on income not, how much do they pay more?
Uh, two ninety-five.
So basically, three hundred dollars for-
Per fifty thousand.
A thousand, and if we do the cap at five percent, and then run it through the CLA, modification, do we have an idea what that comes out to for a five percent increase for the homeowner? Cause I bet that it's gonna come out where owners are gonna pay about the same as the-
As the?
Yeah, just guessing, without having actually done the math at all. Is there some way you could figure that out quickly? What, what a five percent cap run through the CLA comes up being?
Would it roughly be an eighth of that forty-two point four percent? Or no? So, brain working.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, cause it's, it's how the, the CLA affects it.
I mean, it's rough.
It's affected, and- Do we have in there a tax increase pre-CLA, pre-yield number?
Uh, no, this is all post, uh, CLA.
This doesn't-
And you can't change everything, you can only change certain, right, variables?
Yeah, because I mean, without, I mean, there's three yields, you have, you know, the homestead, the non-income, the non-property, and the-
So, um, where's the line that shows how the CLA goes in there? Cause what is it multiplying times?
It's the-
I, unfortunately, I can't see a thing. My eyes aren't good enough on that screen and it's not magnified enough that I can see.
So the CLA, that is the education grand list divided by the equalized education grand list?
Yeah. Uh, I understand that, how you determine it, how's the, is, how does it affect? Uh, so it is line twenty-seven, increase in property taxes times the, uh, divided by, uh, they, you're lost me. Okay, so- So the CLA is sixty-six point three one, and then what do you do with that sixty-six three point three one? You must be multiplying something by, or dividing something.
So it's the, um, ed spending per weighted pupil-
Right.
Um, divided by the yield, which I use the lower yield, which is nine thousand one seventy-one. Uh, and then that's all divided by the CLA.
To get the adjusted-
Your actual equalized homestead tax we assess by the town.
Right, so the point is, there's no way for us easily to figure out when a five percent tax is run through the CLA adjustment? Should be an easier way to do this. Do you have the actual paper sheet? It's got a lot of that formula in there.
I can print that for you here.
Yeah.
I have one from last week, but I'll go get it, cause-
It's not easy to figure out.
No, this isn't easy.
Yeah. All right, so- So, but, uh, property taxes, please. Uh, where is the? How do I do this also to the non-residential? How does it affect the non-residential?
I mean, it-
Um, cause they have a different tax rate entirely.
Yeah. Um, theirs is all based on the, the yield. And that one, I think, being that, that, you know, you have roughly fifty-three percent, um, that are on the homestead, or at least eligible for the homestead, so that leaves you, you know, roughly forty-three percent that are non-income based. Um, I wouldn't be surprised if the state of Vermont took that and decided to, um, increase those taxes, uh, a little bit for the state.
I'm not seeing how the-
That, that's part of the calculation, you know, made by the Ways and Means Committee, you know, in order to attempt to equalize, you know, those factors.
Okay, I'm not good enough, and this is not clear enough for me to figure out what we're gonna be ending up with in terms of a- Uh, I thought I had seen in one of the explanations that what they did is took the five percent and divided by the CLA to get the adjusted payment that would be- but that was something I saw in passing and I didn't really capture it, so I don't remember if I'm remembering it correctly or I made it up.
You thought, "Oh, this'll sound good there."
And I'm not the expert on this, I'm just starting to try to, and I've been playing the game for a very long time, but I haven't had to dig actually into the-
Formula.
The formula to the extent that we're doing now, because it all got done for us in a way that was useful.
Yeah.
And now it's coming out in a way that's not as useful as we'd like.
No, it's a whole lot of new stuff to share with-
Yeah.
The whole change in the funding.
Yeah, the change of the funding and the weddings and everything else.
No, one of the key things in our decision is gonna be how we decide to utilize the cap. And the effect that that's gonna have, not so much on twenty-five, but on twenty-six.
Yeah.
Uh, because that's a clear, uh, inflection point, you know, as far as the, uh, the actual dollars.
Well, we know that twenty-six is gonna be very painful. The question is, is it gonna be as painful as this year? Yeah, so, I'm afraid I'm not gonna be able to answer this, if you can't figure out some way to make the spreadsheet.
Now, I have a question, just about the next fiscal year. What is the town's incentive with this low CLA to actually move forward on the appraisals? And how would, if that process started, how would that affect this in that next year?
So, I don't think the town has a huge incentive directly, is the way I understand it, they just assess against the grand list and send you, it's not adjusted the same way.
Right.
Um, so a low CLA means that, um, well, it doesn't- well, it doesn't mean that the tax rate that they come up with has to be higher to raise the amount of money they want to raise, but it doesn't impact the dollar amount.
Right.
Um, you know, in a way that's reflective of what happened here, because this is sort of an external assessment, because remember, all the money is raised by the state, flows to the state, and they send it back. And how much money the state tries to take from us depends on where a CLA is.
The CLA is the way that the Agency of Education balances, equalizes property values across the state when they actually fluctuate a lot.
Now, the, the, there's an obligation to get the grand list. And I believe that the, and this is, but I've heard, but I haven't seen it side by side, I know for a fact. They gets too out of whack, it gets, the state forces you to go assess it again. The real problem is, as I understand it, anybody who knows how to do this work is working flat out already. And there's basically a, a very long waiting list to get people to come and reassess the grand list. And it's not a quick or easy process, and so towns are both not inclined to undertake it too often and not able to take it as often as they might.
Yeah.
Am I basically correct?
Right, pretty much, and most of the state needs to be reappraised.
Yeah, so we're, we're in a, in a very large barrel, with a lot of other towns.
Yes, it's, the way I remember is that our town is like two years behind in getting this assessments done. And we only have one person to go out and.
Yeah.
For the whole district.
So usually you hire a firm to do it for you.
So, he is, uh, up here.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's never going to be done by a, in a, in a rapid way by a employee of the town. You're gonna have to find a firm that's an expert on it and come in and do it. And they will have the tools and the people to come in and.
When was the last time we did that?
It's been quite a while.
It's been a long time, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
A very long time. Yeah. Last thing I can remember was more or less about the time I moved here. It doesn't mean I.
It, it, there's not been one since we moved here in two thousand and twelve that I'm aware of, or at least since we owned the property.
There's even more though.
Yeah, I think it happened a year or two after I moved here, the last I remember, but then again, I wasn't necessarily paying attention.
About twelve years ago.
Yeah, maybe about right, yeah. Sounds, sounds, feels right to me. All right.
So, in talking with Brad James, I'll just use, um, obviously, you know, we had some minor adjustments here, um, to the expenditures, but um, if we use that, um, and we get our, you know, per pupil costs below the ten percent.
Yeah.
Uh, the equalized rate would be one point four 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 zero, and the actual rate on the bill would be two point one seven seven seven, using the CLA of sixty-six point thirty-one percent.
Which is close, so.
So that'd be an increase of six point eighty-eight cents on the ETR and an increase of thirty-nine point fifty-two cents on the ATR.
Okay, so, we can apply that. Um. I thought that, that sounds like what I remember reading somewhere.
Yeah, that was just the email that I got back this morning.
Okay.
We're all trying to swirl our head around this stuff.
So, um. Thank you.
Yeah.
Find it so I can read it. One seven seven, use the, okay. So that's, per hundred thousand, it comes out to three hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty cents, using these numbers as being correct. So, is it, that's roughly the same order of magnitude as it would be for the. So, I think, I would suggest this is probably the only avenue we have that doesn't involve immediate and very, very hard choices. This involves immediate moderately hard choices. Um, but it doesn't involve immediate really, really hard choices. And it gives us another year to be seriously thinking about how we approach the following year. But, um, it has to be totally admitted, this is, this isn't avoiding the problem, it's just.
So, so Jacob, uh, a question about Brad's emails. And, you know, I was just rereading that, and, you know, he admits that it was, it appears to be confusing, you know, to what the hun- hundred-plus business managers around the state that are dealing with these numbers every day. Uh, and a lot of that has to do with what I'm, you know, reviewing here, you know, is the, uh, the reasonableness of your per pupil spending changing. Does, does that make sense? You know, like, because that's what can be reviewed by the secretary.
Right.
And it doesn't, it doesn't automatically mean, uh, you know, that, it doesn't automatically mean that, you know, you will get, you know, the variance or not. But they're expecting this to occur. You know, hope, they're hoping that when it happens, it happens for the right reason versus, you know, just gaming the system, so to speak.
Right. So, acting sort of on a leaf of faith, because I don't know how this will all flow through the sheet. Um, I would suggest that we pick a number of nine point eight, nine point seven, whatever, nine, that's one offer. Uh, as the per pupil increase for the year, giving ourselves some leeway with the state so that they cannot.
Oh, they can make their mistakes and it's still.
Yeah, that's still, well, it won't bite us too badly. Uh, and that we proceed on that basis with the understanding that that's a contingent upon us deciding to pass the bond, because the bond takes four point five million dollars or so out of the budget that we would otherwise have to find.
So Peter, that, you know, that makes sense. One quick question for Jacob, and you know, again, as I, as I'm reading, you know, the memo from ALV. That being accounted for, what would happen? Or, or what could the effect be on that increase of three hundred-plus families on the district?
So, we were discussing that. Presumably, some of those three hundred families wouldn't be new. They would be families who were already in here, who found housing all of a sudden, who didn't have good housing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but presumably, there would be some additional students. All other things being equal, additional students would help keep the spending per pupil down. And would give us a little more room. The problem is, A, we don't know exactly when those units are supposed to hit and how long the rental period takes, and how long that takes for us to get students into the schools. We know we're gonna get hit. But this is one of the reasons we wanted to do the, the study on demographics.
Right.
Could, could help you with that year two coach, that you were concerned about. Could well help with.
See, see, that, that's the key.
If, and this is the if, having all that new rental property come on to the market doesn't increase the grand list so much that the common level appraisal goes down faster than the number of students we get goes up.
So the long, the long-term weighted average is a two-year weighted average. Um, so obviously, you know, depending on what category they would fall under on the weighting, um, that would have, you know, bigger shifts or not.
But even if it falls low, it's still better than it would have been without the students.
More kids are more kids, no matter where.
Yeah.
And the weighted average is actually very positive for next year, so.
Yeah, right, yeah, the, the real question is, where does the common level of appraisal come in all of this?
That's the big factor, because the other numbers, uh, we did very well this year. We had an increase in the equalized students, we had a decrease in the spending, but the CLA dropped so significantly, it blew all that out of the water.
But we do have an increased stu- uh, spending for students, but, yeah.
Yeah, but it's.
It's a lot less than would have been otherwise.
Yeah, and it's a lot less than years past, but the CLA just.
Right.
So as we're looking at hopefully increased numbers of pupils, that means we're gonna have to have more staff. So we have that figured in.
Adjust staffing levels, one or the other.
Some of them, we can't adjust, some of those staffing levels in some of these rooms, you can't, there is no.
That's part of why we wanted to do that study, to see if we have the right configuration in each building.
I mean, we're, we're dealing with it, what the students, no matter what. And it's gonna affect how the district functions, because we're gonna have to figure out, Superintendent's gonna have to figure out what the budget catchment, and we've had this conversation.
Well, and where they're gonna go, because one of the issues, I mean, although it's a good thing that there's more students, they're all in the White River School catchment area.
Right, right.
So we need to redraw the lines, and we wanna do that, uh, based on, you know, some, some data.
And that's one of the things that they.
That's one of the big questions for the, for the study that.
One school since, has been sending, um, kids with challenges and saying, we don't have the personnel, we can't do it, so we're gonna send them over here to this other school. It's to the point, now that the other school, the receiving school here is, is now having problems, because they have no place to put their kids.
Yeah, there's a lot to that.
So, I know there's a lot more to that, because I'm just keeping it really simple, but that's why I'm so that's some of my concerns with when we're bringing in all these additional students, which is good, I don't have a problem with that. I just wanna make sure that when we're looking at that, that we've got the proper teachers, well, and the teachers that are educated to, to deal with some of the kids that may have some real problems.
Well, we wanna be thoughtful too, because like I said, they're all moving.
Yeah, exactly.
All of the developments are all in the White River School catchment area, the way it sits now. And so the lines will need to be redrawn, or the schools that we have might need to be, um, sort of changed, the co- what, what they do. Like, the middle school, does the middle school stay a six through eight, or do we look at some other?
So there, there are lots of.
There are a lot of different possibilities, that's why we wanna do the study.
Yeah, so there are a lot of issues that, uh, the school board is going to have to deal with in the years ahead. Uh, if I can use a rather unpleasant metaphor, uh, we just got a massive bleeding wound. We're talking about putting a tourniquet on, which will keep us alive, hopefully long enough to get to the point that somebody can deal with the wound. Uh, somebody being us. Uh, but it doesn't mean that the wound has gotten away just because we put the tourniquet on and we're not immediately bleeding.
I just don't want Band-Aid fixes and.
No, that's exactly why the Facilities Committee wanted to do the, the enrollment study and the, um, and so the school configuration study, because we have to redraw the lines and we wanna know. We don't wanna settle this for a year or two, we wanna look long-term. What's the best way to utilize the existing buildings, given the students and where they live? What's the best way to do that? And, and, and a study would give you options to choose from, it's not just gonna say, well, you need to make you know, White River School a pre-K three, and you need to make, it will give you some options of, this will do this, but and also if you need to build a new school, because it's a significant amount of development. When and, and where? When and where, and what need would that serve? Yeah. When you say that, that scares me. Because I know the town, when somebody goes to the planning committee, because they wanna build a apartment building with hundred and fifty units in it, the town assesses charges for sewer and water and impacts, other impacts for the town. Do, do we have a, a charge? That if they're gonna sit there and bring in a hundred and fifty more units and it's tabulated that.
Not anymore.
We used to, but not anymore.
So.
Actually, it, it's been suspended, it wasn't removed fully. If you recall, the, the way that was worded, and the way the, the discussion, you know, was left, it was around the time that, and it was an economic time, that the shift occurred. And it left the door open for re-initiating that fee, if necessary.
So the answer why we don't anymore have that fee in place is that, at the time, nobody wanted to move here. We were losing population. And it was thought that if we remove that, that was removing one more impediment to people moving here. We didn't want to come here and propose a major increase in something that was gonna get you stuck with a charge that you had to pay upfront as one of your development costs. And so we looked at it, the school board at the time, and said, you know, depopulation's a bad problem. Well, we have been successful, that strategy worked. We have got people here, we now need to deal with the other side of the problem. There are consequences to every decision that you make. So.
So is there a motion for the budget, or how do you wanna allow these two questions?
So, um, so let me put something out there and you can all.
So, so, so before, before we, before we entertain a, a motion, I, I think that in all fairness to the work that's gone into the budget at this point, and the work that's gone into the development issues, as well as the Facilities Committee work, it would make sense to me that we would look at a potential number and not very specifically every detail of that, because. I I just think that that would be prudent on our part.
So. Make sure I understand what you're saying. So are you suggesting that we say, and I'll pull a number out of thin air? We want to know what cuts you would make if we were to get the per pupil spending increase down to nine point two percent.
Yes, something, yeah.
So that gives us a, we can then decide where we wanna go down to the nine percent that Mr. Hesizance has suggested. We wanna go up slightly to give ourselves a little bit more room, though put ourselves at the rest of the state way. Find fault with our numbers, but just to have a a reference point. So if we were to cut enough money, which is what, about million three?
If you did one million two hundred and fifty thousand, that gets you to eight point nine seven percent on your per pupil increase.
Okay, so we'll use that number, because we got it already.
So we're gonna use, what is it, eight, eight what?
Eight point nine seven percent of per pupil increase.
Right, and that's a cut of.
One million two hundred and fifty thousand.
One million, so one point two five million, okay? What cuts would be suggested as to to meet that? Now, we can get two hundred thousand of that.
Two hundred.
Well, let's, wait, 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 that's where I'm having a difficulty right now personally. You know, is naming specifically where that occurs at this moment. Because that could come back and bite us even worse than the effect of other things, you know, so I I.
What are you wanting to get out of this exercise? Are you really wanting a, how badly, will it hurt?
No, no, the the thing is, we know it's gonna, Peter, we know it's gonna hurt. And we know it's gonna be painful anyway to look at it.
Yes.
The question I'm having is, we have to be careful not to exacerbate the pain by saying out of this moment, what those very specific actions will be to get that reduction.
I understand, but if, what is, what is the purpose of the exercise we went through? Just to get the one point two five million dollar number, or?
Kinda, because, I mean, basically, our goal, we need to come up with something for Thursday night. I mean, we can't just go, hi.
Well, what's what's been done in the past is the board has given me a target. And then I've worked, you know, to achieve that with the least amount of pain, and, you know.
Sacrifice.
Sacrifice and, you know, strategically knowing.
But what's the best cuts to make?
Right, and then.
Exactly.
Let the board know that, and that's really more, has been my job in the past, you give me the funds.
But in the meantime, you're the one that's gonna present the budget.
Well.
Well, Thursday is just the bond.
Just the bond?
Just the bonds and the charter. Thursday's an information night, just for the bonds, if either board has a bond and the charter changes, because that's mutual. The budget, budget and informal bond hearing, that's that's in a couple weeks, that's not till the end of January, beginning of February.
For us, we should make it some, I wanna see a decision that says.
Well, the board needs to decide if you're gonna have a bond, so then you would present Thursday.
I wanna focus at the moment on the budget. I want to know that we're going to have X dollars he's expected to make to identify places. And we'll talk about that later, but publicly for now.
How much are we cutting off our previously proposed budgets, right?
And and that's what we've done in the past.
Yes.
Okay, so that's what I was getting at, you know, the exact same thing. You know, so it seems like we're kinda circling the wagons to that point.
The real question then is, do we want to ask effectively for one point two five million dollar cut off the previously proposed, which comes in at just under nine percent increase? Do we wanna go slightly less of any of a, less of a cut, so we have slightly more of an increase? And we come in at, I don't know, nine point one or nine point two? I don't have a feeling from you guys where you're thinking about it, except for Doug.
Doug's pretty clear. Knowing the state of Vermont, I don't trust him.
You think they'll they'll try to game at and say we don't qualify?
Absolutely, yeah.
That that is a legitimate, I I raised that, you may remember, early on in this conversation.
I worried about it too, that's a lot of money.
Yes.
Where is that?
They they know, as a matter of fact, given what's happened, everybody's gonna be coming in very close to ten percent. And they don't wanna pay for any of it. So they will find, most likely, I would if I was in their shoes, where we say, sorry, you didn't meet the target, therefore you can't get the cut. You gotta, your taxpayers have to figure it out how to pay it, rather than the state eating it some way. So I I'm perfectly willing to work with the one point two five number. I just don't have
Yet.
Yet, the feeling if that's the number that everybody else is with, is ready to come in with. I think it's a totally defensible number. I think it gives us some room for error, which is, as we just discussed, a good thing. It has the feel of being an easily understood cut, I think one point two five billion, it's a number that's easy to grasp.
Right.
So for all those reasons.
It maintains about a two point seven five increase still, so it's not.
And it's still still well under, now see, if you look at,
Yeah.
you know, the general fund increase that's being proposed, at least from the administration, the general fund increase is at three percent. Okay, and that that will be coming out actually Thursday. Is it this Thursday, the governor's putting his budget on the table? And it's coming through at three percent. So if we're, what I'm hearing at least, with the one point two five zero number, it puts us, you know, under nine and under three. And I think that just the the optics and the sensibility of it, hopefully to, you know, our our community is, we've thought that part through. The the other, the other piece to that discussion, and when we were in here before, because we have in the past, we we would set that number and then charge the superintendent to come back, you know, with the actual detail. And then we as the board can, let's say, determine if we're in agreement, you know, with that detail. And if there are any shifts that need to be made in the detailed piece versus the actual number. Because we're talking about an actual number needed to finalize this discussion. And it protects Hartford in a number of different ways, because we're under, you know, those variables. Jacob, um, does does that seem to make sense from the financial perspective?
What's that? Sorry, Coach?
Um, basically, you know, the fact that if the board's proposing to look at one point two five million, putting Hartford in a position where they're well below the ten percent.
Yep.
And also below the general fund, three percent of the administration, putting us in a in a good position. The question always comes down to where, or where do those cuts now come from?
And by three percent, you'd be a three percent increase over the budget last year?
Yes.
Is that what that actually represents? But naturally, we had determined exactly what that means in terms of a budget increase. We're looking at two cents of numbers, we're looking at percentage increase per pupil.
No, 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 just it it just the general fund increase.
Right, but you said we were under three percent, I tried to figure out what you meant by that.
Well, well, we came, what was it, two point nine, you know, percent was the the other number that, you know, we had under nine.
Under nine for the
Right.
increase per pupil.
Right.
What is the three percent you're up? Because I don't think that there's a three percent increase on anything that we care about.
There was, there was a number that was attributed to
Right.
the total cost reduction between twenty-three and twenty-four. I don't know, I mean, twenty-four and twenty-five, that that's where it would be. You know, and just just the numerical figure versus the per pupil cost, you know, or working backwards from the cap. But but, you know, that's that's a separate issue for right now. I I think the key, the key point, or the most important point, you know, is the one point two five. And charging the superintendent with bringing, you know, back to the board those, that recommendation on his part as to that. And then we have that decision to make collectively, you know. Do we agree or disagree, you know, with those, you know, those lines?
So I, uh, the one caveat to what you are saying is, I would say is the board's responsibility to cancel the superintendent search if we're going to do it.
Well, I I'm saying right now, we need to talk about that as well. Because that that is an eight hundred pound gorilla in the middle of the room.
Yeah.
And and I'm I'm calling, I'm kinda calling that out at the moment.
I understand.
And, you know, and and you know, and anyways, I I think if we can move the this, you know, the discussion and work forward, you know, I'd like to see that number, the one point two five, with and without. Okay, that that would be my personals, you know, you know, I'm not speaking for anybody else. You know, but I'd have a hard time making that determination tonight.
Okay, so, make sure if I understand.
Please.
Go ahead, yes, Sarah?
Oh, I I I actually feel similarly to Coach, I feel like we should entrust our team to come as close to one point two five as they can with their own best decision making, and if one of those decision making, or one of those choices is, we cut this search, then we have a conversation about what that means. But I kind of like to give them the headway to make their cuts that feel right to them with that target number in mind.
Okay. So my question is then, so we say, okay, we're gonna go, like you said, we're gonna go to the one point two five
Million dollar cut from our previously proposed budget.
Turn this over to Tom and say, okay, Tom, this is what I'm hearing, so I just wanna make sure what I'm hearing is what you're saying.
Right.
So Tom's gonna do his magic on the budget, and then he's gonna come back to us, and he's gonna say, okay, here it is, this is what I'm, this is what I'm suggesting that you cut. And then that's when we, the rest, the whole board, sits down and goes, okay, I agree with this, I don't agree with this, how about this, is that correct?
That is the way we've done in the past.
Okay, I just, that's, that's what I'm, yeah, okay.
Yes, we've had the argument, do we cut?
Yeah, okay, I just wanna make sure.
Exactly.
We can do nothing Spanish, we're just not gonna do Spanish class.
Oh.
And, um, we go, no, but there's too many people like Spanish, we have to find something else.
Oh, I know, I understand that.
So we're gonna have to play that that game.
Yeah. I just wanna make sure that what I was hearing is what you were saying.
Put Spanish on the block, I just had to do something as an example.
Okay, all right.
And 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 that's that's accurate, you know, you know, that's that's a kind of a process piece for us as a board.
That we've delivered in the past, and it's worked.
Right, and it also, it also keeps us on time as far as the number. Because remember, the budget that goes before the voters is a number. It doesn't include all of those other decisions directly until they're made.
Yeah, yes, that is quite true. So the way I've heard it proposed is, we don't put any restrictions or anything else on the proposed cuts with there being one exception. This is contingent on us passing the bond and deciding, or deciding to go forward with the bond.
Right.
Because if we don't do that, we're not looking at, we're not looking at one point two million cuts out of it, we're looking at closer to five and a half.
Right, right, right.
So.
I want us to keep that in the back of our minds all the time. It's in the back of my mind all the time, what if the voters say no to the bond?
If the voters say no, and so assuming the budget, the way it's gonna work is, we're gonna have to come up with a budget and a proposal around the bond, and then we're gonna come out the other end.
Then the.
Which one passed and which one didn't, if they both pass, we're off to the races. If the bond doesn't pass, we're gonna have a very difficult conversation. If the bond passes and the budget doesn't pass, we're gonna have a very difficult conversation. There are provisions on trying to deal with these kinds of things, we've never ever had to get there, thank God. But, um, yeah, this is a way to do this so we have more time to try to reach consensus. We have more time for good news to potentially happen, but also unfortunately, more time for bad news to happen. But at least it allows us to present to a shell shocked public that's been dealing with a significant period of rather extreme inflation with a less inflationary number at the moment. And I couldn't bad about it, but we gotta be honest with what we're doing.
Exactly, and see, that's that's why this is critical to work from a number backwards, because we have been in that situation not during recent history, but prior to thirteen years ago, we had that dilemma occur, you know, so, um, the hope is, you know, we don't have to go back there, because that.
Yeah, well, that was when we had a town meeting that actually did things, and so when the budget didn't pass, we could try to hammer it out in the, I've never done it in when we don't have a town meeting that actually has power, I don't know what that means. The only other thing that. let me put out, and I'm gonna wanna see if we go down this road, is I want a updated version of this that says exactly what that means to the non-resident tax, the resident tax, and to the income-based tax.
Right.
Exactly.
Cause you're gonna have to figure in how to adjust this, you have all that flow through, so we know what that means.
Right.
Exactly.
Uh, but with that, uh, are we ready for me to try to make a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, I, I would say yes.
All right, are you, are you ready, Sarah?
Yes, I think so. Um, I just wanna ask one more question. Does the motion around the bond is separate from the motion around the
Yeah.
reduction, correct?
Built into this is that we're going to do the bond.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
Yeah, so we're sort of voting on both at the same time, but we haven't done the formal, formalities of the bond. So, uh, I would move that we instruct the superintendent to reduce the previously proposed budget by the amount of one point two five million dollars to achieve.
That's gonna be the new number.
Okay, uh, to come in at fifty-two million, four hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-six, give or take a dollar or two, which results in a per pupil increase of approximately nine percent.
That works for me.
I'll, I'll second that.
Say your second part of your motion, though.
Uh.
Oh, the, the bond part?
Was contingent upon.
Oh, contingent, contingent upon the bond, uh, being approved by this group immediately after this.
I'll second that.
Thank you, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Sarah Helter, yes.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks, Sarah.
All right, I think the next one is pretty damn simple, and you guys will get to it. I move that we approve to bring the bond before the town.
I'll second, from Sarah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any further discussion?
Is, is there a, an amount that you want in your minutes?
The bond proposal document. Can you get it? It was a bond of, we got that exacted, so I'm gonna do it. The Wednesday night bond amount, is that what you wanted to use?
Yeah, yeah.
Jonathan?
Yes, yes.
The, the figures today, but, you know, I didn't think that was really.
Wednesday, we had talked about a twenty-one million dollar bond.
Twenty-one million dollars, yes.
Right, right.
Yes.
Okay.
Cause that both avoids four point five million dollars approximately of immediate expenditures that we don't have a choice to, and gives us sufficient money, money for planning.
And, and the, and the data from the bond bank was based on that particular.
Correct, we're making that assumption on, uh, that much principal level with the interest calculation.
Yeah, the, uh, number that was added into the budget you just voted on was based on the twenty-one million dollar bond.
Right.
Not the dated figures.
Right, right. And, and, and just, just for the, the discussion and, and the public, the bond bank felt that this was a favorable time for Hartford to move forward with that because of our position in the bond system. You know, so, so, and, and we'll, that'll be upon us to, uh, share that data with the rest of the community, you know, in a slide deck. But, you know, that's where they're at.
Okay, so I think we have gone through both elements on the, uh, agenda. The only thing that's remaining is there was the request that we have an executive session.
Just one quick thing on the bond.
Yes.
Since there is that information night Thursday, how does the board wanna handle that presentation? Jonathan is not available that night. But I don't know if some members of the board with support from Jacob and I, how you wanna do that.
I cannot be there Thursday night, are you? I had already told you, yeah.
Yeah. Um, so.
I'm assuming I will be there and, um, am obviously willing to support this conversation. Um, in any way you would like on Thursday.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks, Sarah.
I think had some ideas on how we wanted to do that presentation.
Well, I, I think, you know, we, we have a partial slide deck, you know, because we have that data from the bond bank. You know, and I think that that's, you know, critical for, you know, the, let, let's say, the, the community to be able to see what that means. And between what Doug and Sarah have done, the, you know, the actual work in the committee, you know, they, they can support the detail. But I think at the end of the day, you know, a lot of people are gonna wanna know, what's it gonna cost us? You know, what is our responsibility, you know, like there? And how are we looking? So I think, you know, that's the piece that Jacob's gotten from the bond bank.
Right.
If that helps.
Yes, so, is that sufficient, Tom?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so.
All right.
Okay, well, it's time for public comment.
Tom? Yeah, oh, yeah, it makes sense, yes.
Okay, the board welcomes public comment. This is not a time for discussion, but the board is interested in hearing comments, concerns, and suggestions from the public. Do we have anyone online that's
Just Karen, who is not a member of the public, she's the media PR consultant.
Okay.
All right.
Anything from anyone here on the board?
I think we've had sufficient discussions
We'll turn it to you now again.
Of all of the issues that we're facing and how we're proposing causes, why we're doing it. So there has been, uh, as part of the adoption of the agenda, inclusion of an executive session. Uh, therefore, I would like to mo- move that the board find that there is a need for the executive session pursuant to three thirteen A three for the evaluation of a public officer or employee, and that we enter into said executive session.
Second.
All right. We need to, uh, we, we, there's enough of us that.
Motion, a second.
Okay, God.
All right. Thank you for joining us, sir.
All right, thank you.
And, uh.
Thank you.
Actually, I was hoping I'd be able to.